Congratulations Chris.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
My paperclip's on that.
We got a picture.
I don't see you two.
So the condo.
They sold it once.
It's about first got in.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about these time.
I meant to.
That's a good, good thought.
Everybody.
Yep.
No.
See, okay, that sounds like a great time.
I can't.
Make sure to take.
Oh, yeah.
He just had to drink.
It's definitely.
She's here, of course.
Oh, okay.
You're here too?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
We talked about these time.
I meant it.
That's a good, good thought.
We just shut up for everybody.
Yeah.
Yep.
No.
I mean, they sold it once.
They were like 1,200.
It's about Scott and then Jason.
I am so excited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got a photo for her.
Yeah, right.
We talked about these time.
I meant it.
Yeah, that's a good, good thought.
We just shut up for everybody.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
No.
We're tired as hell.
We know. It's so breaking to the leathers, like.
I like you.
Yes. See, okay, that's, that sounds like a great time.
I don't know.
I can't move.
Make sure to take.
Oh, yeah.
He just had to drink.
It's definitely.
She's here, of course.
Oh, okay.
You're here too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a bunch of.
No, I mean, maybe other.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Good.
Okay.
The mayor.
Yes, the mayor.
I guess the mayor.
Uh.
Yeah.
The mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, the mayor.
I guess the mayor.
Yeah.
We got lots of.
Um. Yeah.
No, I mean, maybe other.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Second.
Good.
Okay.
The mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, the mayor.
I guess the mayor.
Uh.
We got lots of.
Excellent. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you always.
Okay.
Ready to stand again.
Hi.
Okay.
And we're good.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do it.
You'd like to call a word, council meeting Monday, February 11th, 7:00 PM. Opening prayers from Greta. Welcome.
Thank you, Montendo C. Good to be back with you. I have a passage that might be, seem a little strange for you, but I've been wrestling with it for several days now myself, so I, I thought since I had it on my mind. "We do not wrestle against flesh and blood, but against the rulers, against the authorities, against the cosmic powers over this present darkness, against the spiritual forces of evil in the heavenly places." In our 21st century American world, I don't think we take this kind of stuff super seriously, but there are actually a lot of secular people that are starting to write books about sort of the death of evil and the struggle that we have now that we've sort of cast all this spiritual stuff out. And if you've ever seen the movie Silence of the Lambs, there's this one scene where the detective or the person that's kind of analyzing him is sort of backed away and says, you know, "What happened to him to make him like this?" And he has this incredible response, like, "You can't reduce me to some set of causes and background and things that happened in my life. I have it." And so my prayer tonight will just be that, as we come together, that any psychological, emotional, unseen forces would be kept at bay as we go about the good work of the city. That's right. Lord, God, Heavenly Father, we thank you. We thank you for this gathering of people, committed citizens, who have been appointed to various tasks within the government. Some have been elected. Concerned citizens are present, and we are just here to make sure that the forces of good triumph over the forces of evil, that our city and our community are able to prosper and thrive, and that everyone gets to enjoy the good that takes place. We ask that although we don't really understand this and we have a hard time wrapping our head around the fact that there may be unseen spiritual forces, psychological forces, emotional things that come into play, that you would keep them at bay and that you would allow the good work tonight and every day that takes place here in North Canton to continue to move forward for the betterment of all the people of this community. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tim, can you, please call roll.
Sir.
Here.
Member Revo.
Here.
Member Sule.
Here.
Member Fonte.
Here.
Member Ware.
Here.
Member Peters.
Here.
Member Foles.
Here.
Seven present. All right, thank you very much. And now for your consideration, may I have a motion in a second to read by title only presented. City Council Meeting Minutes, January 14th. Special City Council, or I'm sorry, Special Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, January 14th, 2019. Council Meeting Minutes, January 28th, 2019, and Financial Reports, January 19th.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second. Favor.
Aye.
Most. Motion carries. Okay, before we get into recognition of visitors, I'm going to turn the floor over to the mayor, he has. Yes. Proclamation. All right. I got it up here. Okay, so a lot of you, I'm sure, know who Chris Howey is. He is North Canton Hoover's number one fan, especially the sports fan, right?
Yep.
You go to all the basketball games and most all the softball, right?
Yep.
And then he also goes up and helps out at the fire department, right?
Yep, I know, he's involved.
Because you're their number one fan too. And then, and he's also our number one fan here at the city council meetings. And even when it's cold outside, like it was 10 below and you were walking down Main Street, but you weren't, you didn't bring your hat and gloves that day, so it was a little chilly. So, so now you're going to wear those in the future, especially because we had some extra, there were people in North Canton that were leaving up gloves and hats along the light posts, and so we had a collection of them, and they were putting them up in the event that somebody needed hats and gloves, and so Chris had, had one that fit him and some gloves, so you know, make sure to wear that stuff, right? All right. So what we did is, most recently, Chris's grandfather, who he had lived with and who had, you know, been his number one supporter, had passed away. And, and his name was Paul Fosnite, and he was how old, 92, 92 years old. And so what we did is we put together a certificate of recognition for Chris Howey and his grandfather, Paul Fosnite, for their dedication and contributions to the city of North Canton and for being Hoover Vikings number one sports fans. And then I have it signed by myself here on February 11th. Okay. Can you just get a ranger, Chris? Okay? Hold this up, and you can see it.
Thank you.
All right, Chris. Do you want to say anything?
Nope.
Okay. You got to thank.
Chris, thank you for coming today.
Yep.
Great seeing you.
Second time, guys. I rule.
We'll go for a third.
At this time, if you wish to address council, please step forward, state your name, and add us for the record.
Chuck Osborn, 307 Main Street, Southeast Port Canton, Ohio. Well, Mayor Hild, I guess the truth finally comes out, I thought I was your number one fan. I did demote you.
You have competition, right, like Chris is like, sorry.
You got, you got to get past me first.
This man went out of his. Um. I also like to back up some comments that were made by Mayor Hild here, I guess it was last week, I'm losing track of his meetings. Mayor Hild had called the meeting to order because our council president and vice president were no-shows at last week's, I guess it was last week's meeting. I think he said it's first time in here. Now that we're looking closer to 20 years, it's ever happened. I think it's important that we have backup, but it seems to be a trend here. Remember years ago, Mrs. Keesling, as vice president, had to assume the presidency, and her first act, I guess within 24 hours, resigned the presidency. That's the way I would call it. There's a purpose for having a vice president. It's not just a title, here to be here to fill in. We had to call up Third String, Mr. Revo, to conduct the meeting in sports parlance. Come on, guys, you can smile a little bit. But the vice president is a very important position, and I have to concur with the mayor, I have never seen him in my lifetime up here. So I think there should be better coordination between the president and vice president, just like Vice President Pence, he's a hard way away from being a president. God, help us all. But that's the role of the vice president. Secondly, I'd like to appoint council to some other unfortunate ongoing activity here at City Hall, and that's a number of violations of the vital sunshine law and/or charter, or both. They're getting so numerous, I can't even keep track, on weekly basis. And I wonder if anybody here on council even recognizes what's going on. I have to hand it also to Mr. Diorio here a couple weeks ago, when he was getting ready to vote on the purchase of the ambulance. Mr. Diorio came right out and said, "Hey, guys, the border patrol's already awarded this contract prior to your authorization of them doing this." It's violation of the charter of state law, I'm sure, both. Let alone that that border patrol meeting was a violation of the sunshine law. What is happening to our 11th representation of the citizens of North Canton and North Canton City Government? I'll tell you, it's getting harder for me especially, and some others have told me as well, to even continue to participate up here. I'm going to be 70 years old here in a couple months, and I tell you, I'm ready to hang it up. It takes an emotional toll to see what goes on up here. We do not have accurate representation of the citizens. It's a rubber stamp of whatever's put before you, or what our law director has put before you, or what he has guided you to do. So, on the record, those are my comments.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to take a, a moment to let you know about something that we're working on with the Plain Old School Schools, and open that up to anyone that may be connected to the North Canton schools, or anyone else in the community that may be listening or watching later, about partnering with us. I'm getting together with a group from Glen Oak High School on Thursday, including their superintendent, Brent May, to see if there are ways that we at Holy Cross and we, others in the community, can come together to try and support some of our high school students, particularly those that might be at risk of not being able to graduate. We had some ideas that didn't quite come together, and maybe we need to look earlier than high school, but I guess I'm just, I just want to throw it out there that anyone that has any thoughts, ideas, or is looking to partner with other people in the community to try and, and help make sure that these kids aren't falling through the cracks, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I realize, I forgot that, thank you. Amel Greterson, 10-9-8-8, South Russia Avenue, Northeast Union Town, Ohio, 446-85, Associate Pastor at Holy Cross Lutheran Church. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council? There. We will move on to whole business, and a motion in a second to read by title only, second reading ordinance number 2-19. So. Second.
An ordinance amending chapter 139, Department of Engineering of the City of North Canton's codified ordinance, specifically section 139.03, division of permits and inspection, to describe the restructuring of the Department of Engineering.
Okay, it hasn't been read, there was a motion in second.
Roll call.
Roll call. All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. All right, motion carries. Chairman, what? This is the second reading of this particular ordinance. It reflects the alignment of, realignment of the supervisory division and chain of command. For those who are interested, this ordinance is amending a section that is fully contained in the document. Why move we adopt the second reading of ordinance? Second. All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. All right, they have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number, I'm sorry, second reading, ordinance number 2-19. So move.
Right. Go read.
Read. 3-19. Good run, thank you.
I'll move for number 3 also.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 50-03, zoning ordinance of the city of North Canton to change the zoning to the Main Street Business District, parcels buddy Main Street, from an intersection of Orion Street and North Main Street to the intersection of Everhart Road, South Main Street, as more fully described in chapter 1121, 1123, 1125, 1127, and 1137 of North Canton's codified ordinances, and accepting those certain parcels clearly illustrated in the zoning district map, attached here to incorporated herein, which are non harmonious with intent of the Main Street Business District.
All right, thank you. Chairwoman Keesling.
Yes, this is the second reading of the central proposed zone change. I'd like to offer that we have a beautiful general map up here for anybody who'd like to look at it, and the map is also attached to the legislation. Any question? And it's up on the screen. So called, so pretty. And we're going to start a public hearing as well for it later.
Yeah, at the end of the speaking.
Any questions, concerns? And then we should be enough.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. On to new business. They have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number 6-19. So move.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. Tim.
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration of the City of North Canton to advertise and receive bids, according to specifications now on file in the Director's office, and authorizing the mayor, upon board control, approval to enter into a contract for the resurfacing, repaving, replacement, repair, preventive maintenance of certain city streets and alleys, declaring the same to be an emergency.
Chairman, fine. This is our annual program, it's roughly $500,000, we talked about it, and the whole, and it's just going to be repaving streets and alleys where you can be, we have a list, a list loading around out there, remember, I say that, I move to be approved, first reading. Second. Most favor.
Aye.
Most. Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to suspend council for three readings for ordinance number 6-19. So move.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. Motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules, ordinance number 6-19. So move. Second. All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Well, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number 7-19. So move.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. What's that?
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration of the City of North Canton to advertise and receive bids, according to specifications now on file in the Director's office, and authorizing the mayor, upon board control approval, to enter into a contract for the Watkins Avenue and Laurel Avenue water line replacement project, declaring the same to be an emergency.
Chairman, fine. We talked about this as well, this is basically a water replacement project, as well, on those short streets, and then the black top deck, that's about $500,000. It's on an emergency, for the type of things and so forth. Question? Yes, sir. Rob, this project will run west on Watkins from Salway to Laurel, then make a right turn down Laurel. Yes. It will not go south from the Watkins-Larale intersection. It will go south approximately 150 feet for the length of the first block. Okay. South, yep. Okay, so a portion of that of Laurel, south of Watkins, that Watkins intersection, 150 feet, will be done. Right. The rest of it will be picked up at a later date. We'll do it in the year 2000. Right, yeah, okay. Place your eyes on the water. Yes. It's on an emergency, I move we approve the first reading. So move. Second. All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings. So move.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to adopt under suspension. So move. Second. All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. Okay, they have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number 8-19. So move.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. Tim.
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration of the City of North Canton to advertise and receive bids for the Price Park walking path improvements, Phase Two project, and authorizing the mayor, upon board control approval, to enter into a contract for the project, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you. Chairman, full.
Thank you. It's in your packet, I wasn't here last meeting, as we all know, but Rob could fill us in, and maybe the link, we're looking for that, but it's the second phase of Price Park, and the first phase looks beautiful, the north end, this is south end towards the Glenwood entrance, and we're very appreciative of the Stockard Trust that's going to help pay for this, and that the funding, that's going to be moved over $48,000, and $60,000, just other, just other funds that can run our general fund. And if you ever drive, walk the path, I'm sure most of us have, there is a stone with a plaque that refers back to the Stockard family, Mr. Stockard in particular, we use that tractor every day, so I think it's a great capital improvement for our parks, it's a well-used facility, it's a beautiful Price Park, and Rob, if you have anything else to add? Just about 2,350 feet, roughly, is that South Loop. And it's about, what, 90 feet wide?
It is actually six feet wide currently, and it's six feet, and we're going to widen it to 90.
Okay. So I know the North, the North End was 9 and 10, so that's good.
Yep.
It'll make it easier to pass each other on the walk.
Exactly.
For mother strollers, they pass them, so that's good.
Rob, would you want to advise the council about the green? Yeah, what we also talked about last week is, last year when we sold Phase One, we collabed real high bids from our locals, even though we specified normal, regular asphalt, regular high grade. Diving into that, I found out that they all, most of the locals did it with a limestone-based asphalt, because it doesn't lead up through the green, well, that green wears off pretty quick, well, foot traffic, within a couple of years, we have to redo that, but the, the ceiling folks wouldn't want either to prop, so they automatically used a much more expensive limestone. Here, an out-of-town contractor who's not okay, who's got a significant punch list, bid it with the normal, that's how you lost the job. So what we're going to do is not put the green on this one as part of the construction contract, then we'll go back in after the fact, and I stress, normal asphalt, you know, because if rust comes up through on a test board, that's terrible. Right. That's not what we want. But on a walking path that gets worn off every other year, it's not worth that added expense, so we're going to try leaving that green off, so our locals will actually throw a better number at it, and then we'll go back out and, and, and hire someone just to do the green, and probably unperform the green on the north loop, so the same company does both loops, so it's all matching, same green, same time.
That'll be, that'll be a summer year, maybe next year.
Right, we won't get the green on this year.
Or this year.
Yes. And the other thing is that asphalt has to sit above, depending on company, 16 to 90 days before you can file a sealer.
The weather.
Right, it's got the weather, exactly, and that's just leaving that contract for too long, so I'm assuming, close it out, get someone in there, do the whole thing in green, and then do that. I think we'll save so much, the lesson I learned from diving into why we had higher number last year.
That's good to know, and I believe we clean the track now, do we not? For maintenance.
Yeah.
I think we, so the other consideration, if we're going to nine feet, it's a lot easier for our equipment to get on there, make the turns and so forth, so it's a good, it's pretty tight, depending on equipment we have, so.
Any other questions from council?
No.
With that, I'll make a motion to put the first reading of ordinance number 8, 2019. Okay, all favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings, so move. Second. All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. And finally, they have a motion and a second to adopt under suspension. So move. Tim. All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. All right, they have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number 9-19. So move. Second. All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. Tim.
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration of the City of North Canton to advertise and receive bids, according to specifications now on file in the Director's office, and authorizing the mayor, upon board control approval, to enter into an agreement for the purchase of two Ford Police Cruisers from a vendor, or in the alternative, pursuant to the Ohio Cooperative Purchase Act, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you. Chairman Ware.
So we did talk about this last week, and the chief was also in there, also here getting your questions, we had talked about this during the budget process, and we were really good about applying any weather cards we could be exchanged, and everything's changed together. So this is about $72,000, and this is an emergency as well, so I gave it to them, I have other questions.
Before there's a second, this will be the same one we have, the SUV, the main SUV.
Yeah. Totally.
Okay. The word issue, most opposed to Tom, she has to be taken.
I'll sign it.
All right. All favor.
Aye.
Most opposed. Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council.
They have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of counsel for three readings for ordinance number nine dash nineteen. So moved. Second. All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to adopt under suspension. So moved. Second. All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, they have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance number ten dash nineteen. So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Tim.
An ordinance authorizing the Mayor of the City of North Canton to the state of Ohio contract schedule and upon board of control approval to enter to an agreement for the purchase of a two thousand nineteen Provelco Model eighty-five C S excavator and accessories at a cost not to exceed eighty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Ware.
We talked about this also last week, and we need an excavator, and we've got one for approximately eighty-five thousand dollars, and, uh, that was it.
I wasn't here for that conversation, but, uh, we were repurposing that new trailer, uh, trailer that we have to accommodate this, correct? We already have that. Are we using the trailer?
He didn't.
I don't know.
Yeah, he didn't say that.
Oh, he didn't talk about that?
Uh.
We didn't talk about it?
Just that they needed it and just.
I'll find an answer for you.
Could be used by different groups.
Is SWAT, you can leave the street water, really?
Right.
Share.
Share. Share.
Each utilize it?
Yeah, I did. Couldn't have pretty often, but I did. I don't appreciate it. You handled it well.
I guess I did.
You handled it very well.
So, uh, we should.
Your second.
With the.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. They have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of counsel. So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries, and finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension. So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, reports, uh, should be director free.
No report.
You're grabbed.
Uh, yeah, I guess first thank you for the legislation tonight. All three projects, we brought the bid Thursday, and we'll open those bids at eleven, eleven fifteen, and eleven thirty respectively on Friday, March first. Uh, secondly, uh, we had another incident that ended at Everhard Road and South Main Street last week, as I'm sure you're all well aware.
Yes.
Luckily, the person was okay. He was actually transported back to her home. I haven't seen the final report, but I think that she's citing fog, under any other circumstances. But what we're doing, take action. As we talked a few weeks ago, we, that, a day or two of that last meeting, we spoke about it. We did put up the larger double arrow sign. So that, that's already up. She went south of that sign by about three feet, so. Still. The other, uh, thing that happened today is part of our Everhard Road project with the county. You've seen that mast on pole off over the road, the three lane assignment signs went up on that. So there's two arrows up there over the, the middle two lanes directing you left. Another one on the southern most lane directing you to turn right.
Oh, that's great.
So that's gonna be a big.
Yeah, we were just saying that yesterday, and we were passing that right on these though. Almost the one you could go in and it would go right on these.
They had a little temporary sign there, and then that's gotta go, and the temporary sign blocks the signal ahead of sign.
Right.
So we'll get on.
No, I think that will help tremendously.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Because it was black, it was missing.
Yeah, it just had a big black arm with nothing on.
Well, I think people were still trying to cross over, and then they would go either far left or far right, and they didn't know that they had to turn there, so that will help driven.
Right, that took some time because the signs fabricated, because one actually says East Hill in the middle. But I think that will help.
But wait, there's more.
Oh.
The other thing we've done is came up with a plan, I can pass this around, we're gonna put in, uh, the square, which you rotate them forty-five degrees, so they're like a diamond. But these object marker signs, these yellow ones, we're gonna put seven up in there, about four and a half to five feet tall.
Will they be right in front of the arrow?
There'll be three south of the arrow.
Okay, then the arrow.
And then four north of the arrow.
Okay.
So we're really gonna have, you know, big signs, or too awful jolly, but at least they're there reflective.
Yeah.
We didn't wanna try anything with flashers, because we want folks to look at those signals.
Yeah.
Which is something else we've done in the last month. We had three traffic lights up there, not for the three lanes.
Mm-hmm.
And the two green arrows heading in north to turn left, they're actually arrows and not a ball.
Yeah.
And then the southern, the ones heading south, the can to green arrow to the right.
Okay.
So trying to, they were green balls, you might think to go straight, but they're arrows.
Right.
We're kinda running out of options.
No, I think that's, you, you troubled it at this point.
Very good. We'll try it, see how it goes. I'm talking with Chief Bacon, just something that he recalls happening in the seventies once Everhard was widened.
It was really boggish that night, though.
It was, I was here to claim a commission, and it was kinda dicey for me.
Yeah, and that was kinda lower there, and I remember going up over there, yeah.
So, uh, those, uh, object marker signs should be up sometime this week. We just actually might dispatch out to delivery over in South Main.
Thank you.
And could you say how, the size of the yellow diamond, and then what about the inside channel?
Yeah, the yellow diamond, they're eighteen inch by eighteen inch square. Of course, we rotate them, so they look like a diamond. And then in the sign pole itself, we put that little yellow channel filler in there. That's reflective, you can see it red on the stop sign or yellow. We have it in the double arrow sign down there now.
Okay.
So this really should stand up.
So each diamond is eighteen by eighteen?
Eighteen by eighteen.
Okay.
Good work.
Good work. Rob, before this go, um, could you touch base for a quick, yeah, on the intersection of Apple Grove and North Main?
Absolutely, yeah.
Because there's some folks watched last, or two meetings ago, they spoke on that, and they thought it was gonna go all the way forward. Can you kinda explain what, what we're gonna do and why we're not going, what we're waiting up for?
Right, we were fortunate enough, the team with the county engineer, who was successful and received a two hundred thousand dollar grant. It's available after July first of this year to repave the Apple Grove Street from the, just west of, of North Main, through the main Apple Grove intersection, where it's so bad right now, all the way east to Markville. It's about three quarters in the city, twenty-five percent in, in the township. Uh, with that grant, we're gonna totally reconstruct the middle of that intersection. We won't pay for all of it, but at least it's a help. And the bad news is, we still have to do a late summer, the money's just not available until July. So that'll get the worst of the problem in that intersection late in the summer. And then we were successful, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, as I reported, we've just recently been awarded a grant to repave North Main Street from Seven all the way up to the Port Line at Orient, which is fantastic. We have seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars on a nine hundred and some thousand dollar project.
Pollard?
Pollard, absolutely, yes, sir. Both will be Pollard, Apple Grove and, and North Main. But the trouble is, you know, North Main in front of Akron, it's not in the best of shape now. The, the, the bad news with that grant, it's not available until fiscal twenty-one, or, or summer of twenty twenty-one, fiscal twenty-two, July first of twenty-one. So it's still two plus years out, so we're gonna have to get the duct tape and hold that together, much like we did Everhard for a couple of years. Get that at almost very real cost.
Yeah.
So.
We'll patch.
Catch twenty-two, we got money to pay, but which, then we can, if we have seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, put in our neighborhood funds and things like that.
Yeah.
Difficult to get grants.
We like that.
But a high-profile street is not gonna be up there standing.
We need some really good duct tape.
Really good.
That's what we need, Sam.
Really, yeah.
That's right.
I have a question for Rob.
Yeah.
Uh, the railroad tracks at Everhard, they are just horrible.
Railroad tracks are a disaster, but they're going to be addressed as part of the county's project to replace the, the, uh, bridge. But that's not up to the county, that's actually inside City Canton, as we know, the railroad right away is Canton. But what we have, as I talked last week, the closure on, 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 uh, Everhard Road, we're gonna have that closed for a couple of months this summer for that new bridge, right, by the Brininge property there. While that's closed, Akron Metro owns that road. They're coming in, in doing the new track crossing. And we have asked them, can you at least get some cold patch or something?
Yeah, cold patch.
Because it is a disaster in the meantime. Yeah, that's all gonna get addressed when the bridge is up.
I knew it was going to be, but like right at the moment, it's.
It's not good.
No, you gotta careful when you're going west.
Definitely.
It's, it's, actually, it's not even the city, it's inside City Canton and Akron Metro, so we have to pass that concern on to at least get something.
And, and we've talked about it at progress meetings, if they're there, they have asphalt. You don't worry about port lines, we're on dry one, so they're gonna throw some patch in it too. I see. See, if it doesn't do any.
Good. All right.
Thanks for Rob.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, um, so last Friday, the, uh, there was a ceremonial deployment of a hundred and ten of the soldiers from the Ohio National Guard. So they had General Harris and also, uh, Ohio Division of General Michael Ryan that came out. And, um, we also had, uh, members of our staff that had attended that also. And, um, you know, probably, you know, in the past, at least myself, maybe even done three to, uh, three or four deployments, and then you see the, the soldiers as they come back. I can tell you, the hardest thing, I think, uh, ever is to see the troops who are given a thirty-day notice and told that they're gonna go over to Kuwait and Iraq to provide support. And, um, what was interesting is that, uh, one of the soldiers sitting in right in the front row, and we were, you know, they always have the officials here to like, uh, a few words, encouragement to the families and also to the soldiers before they're leaving. And if they family, church, they had it set up beautifully because they had, uh, this flag that I think was as high as the ceiling, that covered the whole backstage. And, uh, but, you know, when you're sitting up there on the stage and you see the, uh, soldiers who are given thirty days' notice that you're gonna be leaving and being deployed, and you see their families, their parents, their, um, husbands, wives, children, uh, in the back, you know, it is, uh, it is definitely, um, uh, it is an experience that you don't forget because you realize the sacrifice and the willingness and the commitment that the soldiers have, uh, to benefit all of us on a daily basis. And it's something you really don't think about, and when they say, well, we'd like you to say a few words, but, you know, what could you possibly say to these soldiers other than, there's so much that we benefit from? Everybody benefits from, from those services that they do, but, uh, most of us, you know, many don't really realize what they're doing. But, um, what was really nice about it is the one fellow, the one soldier sitting in the front row, uh, three weeks ago, I had taken my snow blower up to Home Depot and, uh, because it wasn't working, and, uh, he was the one checking it in and fixing it. And then here, here we are, three weeks later, and he's sitting in the front row, uh, ready to be deployed. So it's like you have these men and women, these soldiers, that are amongst us, all at different places in deployment. And they're ready to go to moments' notice, and they leave their, their family, their friends, their children, their jobs, their houses, everything behind, and they go. And, uh, and I'll tell you, it, it was an impressive group, because they, they are not leaving, uh, you know, they, they leave with total confidence and fulfillment. So it was a nice, nice, uh, experience, a real honor to be a part of it, and also it was nice to see our new governor.
Yeah.
You know, um, it's, it's really, uh, it's a big deal, and he, you know, came all the way from Columbus to see us there, so he's a nice man. And, um, just thankful to all of our troops that are veterans and people that have served in the past. And I even mentioned to him, I said, you know, we all say that it's an honor to be able to address you, and it's, but it really, there's words that you, you can't even find the words to express the gratitude that you have for, um, soldiers and what they're doing. So it was really nice, and that's all I have.
They did a nice article in the paper. I mean, where, I think he were in the paper, um, but it was interesting because they didn't know they were gonna be deployed. I mean, this is the first time, so they, then it's a year, and, um, this is the first time that we've had that, they deployed all of once in for a year, and so they were just a shock. And they said, you know, they have kids that they had to explain to, and just didn't think it was coming. So it was a really, it was a very touching article, and I was just really happy to see you there, and it's all very real.
Yes, it really, it really was, it's just, uh, you know, and again, it doesn't, uh, you're right, places as you're sitting there.
Yeah.
Uh, looking at the soldiers, and then it's like, oh, Mark, uh, and then there's, uh, uh, you know, Sam was another one, and so you, you recognize them. But, you know, they were, uh, they're proud men and women, but they're ready to go. And we had an opportunity to, before they load up on the bus, buses, we, uh, had an opportunity to shake each one of their hands and, you know.
So they really leave after that, that's it?
Yeah, they go.
Goodbye.
That's it. Get some pictures and, you know, with their, uh, the family members, they, they show off, but that was, uh, impressive.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Dior.
Okay. Just wanted to, uh, in case I forget, because I have a lot to talk about, is that council president, we're gonna need a committee of the whole scheduled for February twenty-fifth, after your record scheduled meeting. Okay, uh, the administrative team met February seventh. Uh, every few months or so, I get the, all the, I like to refer to as, you know, the executive leadership of the city, all the people that run the departments, uh, people up here in the administration building, we get together, uh, and we go out for a meal. Uh, this is on, on me, no taxpayer expense, and we, uh, talk about, uh, things that are going on in the city. And, uh, administration brings a couple of issues to the table, things they wanna address, each department brings something. And so it's a very useful exercise for all of us to be together where we normally can't be together during the course of our day. So, uh, that was, at that time, the, the night before, the incident that Everhard and, and Maine occurred. And so we use that in our working session for all departments, all right, let's talk about this, let's brainstorm, let's come up with an action plan. And then we were, you know, notifying, uh, the members of council as a result of that right away. So that was one instance where that worked, uh, really well. Uh, I had, uh, Chief Binock pull the accident reports there since two thousand twelve. And we were only concerned with accident reports in which a vehicle went over the embankment and down the side. And I think because it's such a high-profile incident, it makes us think that they happen, you know, more frequently than, than not. But since two thousand twelve, seven years, we only had seven incidents, so it's one a year. There are other streets and intersections that have a lot more than that. Fortunately, in, in not one of these instances did anybody get hurt. And that's paramount to what Rob was trying to engineer, why we don't want a, a guardrail barrier there that prevents people from going over, because it's likely to, you know, could cause a fatality, because there's no kids. So, um, in all seven instances that occurred, uh, four occurred during the month of December, two in the month of November, and the one that just occurred is the first time that's occurred outside of that, that period. So, uh, although in the incident reports, there was no, I think there was only one in which, uh, there was driver impairment officially. But it gives you kind of an idea, maybe the traffic is too much, or conditions are too bad, or, or maybe there's something else. But it seems to be isolated really in that, around that holiday time, so just to bring up the speed on that. Uh, Stark County, uh, Health Department will have this district advisory council meeting on Thursday, March the seventh, at their offices, uh, from Convenio Circle. It's at seven P.M. Anybody that would like to attend, you go with me. You're welcome to attend. As a reminder, at this meeting, then we'll be voting on the, uh, previously floated, uh, proposal for a rape hike that we talked about back in October, and what that means to the City of North Canton is over a five-year period, beginning in twenty twenty, the costs, uh, for our, we'll call it our subscription to the Stark County Health Department will be an additional ten thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars if that passes, uh, on that night on March seventh, that's when they're voting. If you have questions on that or concerns, just, you know, please reach out. On the February twenty-fifth, uh, meeting, uh, one of the items for committee of the whole would be an amendment to the, uh, professional services agreement for safe health in the city. Uh, we were, as you recall, when we initially passed that through, we had provisions in there for code enforcement, nuisance enforcement as a result of that. Uh, we've since been able to. Uh, we've since been able to, uh, reach agreement on an amendment that would pass some additional savings on to the city. So we wanna bring that forward so we can take advantage of the lower rates. From an IT standpoint, we've had our phishing security tests, uh, and, uh, this is a result of your city email, and if you click on something that's not good, that might be a test of your skills, our IT team sends out fake stories to try to lure you into clicking on things that you shouldn't click on. And, you know, I have to report that two of the three worst offenders are sitting on the other side of the dais.
Should I go all the way out?
No, no.
Are you looking at someone?
Who's the guilty party? Not really, but, um, this does as an educational thing to help you guys understand the dangers of it. Not just digitally, really the city business, but on the personal devices involved. For people out there who are trying to get, uh, your information, so. Uh, all of you received a, a letter, uh, today from Judge Forshanti. He invited you to attend a meeting that concerns, uh, action to be taken towards increasing use of opioids in the community, and so it's a more of a community, uh, event. So please, you know, look to include that, uh, that symposium this Thursday, February 28th, at Malone University from 6:00 to 8:30 PM. We, we received, uh, notice this is more just informational from Charter Communications. Following an internal corporate reorganization, uh, Spectra Mid-America now owns the state-issued authority to operate the cable system in our community. Uh, Spectra Mid-America LLC is a wholly owned subsidiary of Charter Communications. There was no change in control of the cable franchisee. There will be no change in the service your community receives from Charter, and they look forward to many years of serving our community.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Just to thank you, the administration, for inviting finance to the leadership breakfast and meeting as well. We always appreciate the opportunity to sit with the other department leaders and talk about things going on in the city and ways that we can collaborate. And one of the ways we talked about this week was through our new utility billing software. We went live with that software at the beginning of February, went on pretty much without a hitch. I really give credit to the ladies that work in utility billing. They need a big thank you for that. They work very hard, um, and kept serving customers even though they were switching everything out, um, did a very nice job. That software will give us a lot more ability to harvest that data and use it across the city. So if Rob's working on projects and needs to notify residents in a certain area, or looking at water flows in a certain neighborhood, if the building department needs to know who's a renter versus an owner on a particular street, we have some of that data for all of our households, so we're hoping that we can use that even more. Um, one other way that we collaborated this week, Rob and I, um, after he put the street listing out of the street paving that you guys passed tonight, we went ahead and put that on the city's Facebook page so that residents can see it. Not only the annual paving, but the other large projects that we have, the water lines and things for the city that will result in rubber and paving. And we got a good response to that, as we do every year. Um, a lot of questions, though, and I really appreciate Rob. We've been emailing back and forth for about a week. And I'll say, okay, now they're asking about this one, and he goes and takes a look and lets me know, you know, where it is on the list and what the conditions are. And, um, then we were able to collaborate with, uh, Mr. Barrishel to get a few storm sewers cleaned out and, and things cleaned up for some water issues. So it's just nice to see that we all work together and, and work for the residents in that way. Anything, any questions for me? That's all I have.
That's great. Another communication. It's nice to get the positive out there through Facebook, to let people know what we're doing. That's great. You know, we can share it on our pages as well.
All right, I'm under it. And I'm sorry, Pat, I meant to ask you, is there a great, uh, safe belt? Did we add, uh, let me ask you, first of all, how many code enforcement officers are going to be specific to North Canton?
At, at this time, uh, one, and that's based on, uh, just past operating experience. But if council moves forward with some of the other things that we're bringing through to council, then we think that that's a position that's gonna grow into a full-time position and maybe even more than one, I guess. Uh, there's a couple of heavy-hitting changes that we're bringing forward from admin to council that council has been wanting for some time. Specifically, uh, you know, apartment rental registration and, uh, commercial property maintenance codes.
All right. Again, uh, Dr. Fols?
No report. A couple of things. First of all, it is important that we do the Facebook thing. Whether it's Facebook or some other communication, it is so important that people understand. So thank you for doing that. I know there was a while that we stopped putting stuff on Facebook and a lot of people asked about it. So when they do that, then somebody's reading it. So, so nice to them. Um, Pat, good, good way of doing something different, to collaborate and solve problems quickly. Some does a problem government, so it's a way to move forward in solving that. Um, also, we've been talking with Walsh, and it looks like the day of April 1st will be our, at this time, unless we have any other issues. That, that's their open day. But they would like us to have a council meeting out there. So I don't know if I've informed everyone of that yet. So we're going to kind of try to meet and, and, and hammer that out. So April 1st, it looks like is the, we have a couple of dates out there. President Shone could make one. Right now, that's the, uh, because they have a lot of, uh, they, they're done at the end of April.
Right.
And then they have spring, break, early March, so we only have a few dates, so we're gonna try to make that work if we can. So I think it's, and that's all I can...
Per your request, I believe that you wanted that to be a committee of the whole night so that there's actual things to discuss, and so I'm working the agenda for you.
Perfect on that.
Perfect. And Mark, on the Facebook note, it's usually either myself or Catherine that are making those notes.
I know, you're both...
And I think sometimes we just run out of ideas or, you know, things. So if you guys have things that you'd like to see or that you'd care for residents, please let us know. We can get it on there.
Don is really good at that.
Doing, so you don't, well, I'm gonna do that, I'll do that along with, you know, March 20th or, uh, February 25th.
President, don't we have a, a public meeting for MSP?
Has to be March 25th.
We're gonna do that.
It's set for November.
And that's all. Thanks, Mark. Remember all?
Would you, uh, please place on the next council whole agenda a resolution to the planning commission urging it to consider, um, modifying and or eliminating the outdoor dining requirements, restrictions now. Right now, we oppose, we have a ratio in north to outdoor seats. We believe that, uh, the planning commission and developments here in the community probably could be liberalized, and it is consistent with our goal of a walkable for entertainment-oriented Main Street.
Sounds good.
Now, obviously, that would extend to some other areas as well, but, uh, we'd like it to make one of those changes. And then if we can, uh, Mr. President, uh, I would ask that when we have that recommendation from the planning commission, we immediately set our public hearing in advance on our first votes, so we've got, uh, a quick prior voting process.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're looking at, well, well, we're on the topic. We're looking at, um, March 25th.
That's for MSP.
Or us, Main Street business, that's right, I'm sorry.
Should be separate.
We're looking at, uh...
So it'd be sometime later. We can work on what it's...
Okay, all right.
I know. It'd probably, you and Jeff would be able to respond, what do you think of this?
Yeah, I think you and I...
That's all we need.
Uh, thank you. Remember Keith's name?
No report, sorry.
Remember where?
No report.
Fonte?
I just wanted to bring up the flags one more time. Uh, the mayor has some very nice words, and so thanks for all that that you said about our military, men and women. So just as a reminder, um, we had, you know, logistics were trying to decide how to get them out in what order. And Patrick and I had several conversations, and, um, we came up with a plan of action. And so we have a pledge of $10,500, Rotary $2,500, Alliance Club $2,500, Cutler $2,500, Mr. Novelli $1,000, Dehoff $1,000, Lemon $1,000. So if anybody has, anybody that would like to donate any money towards this fund, I would be honored to be able to take the call or be able to help collect that money. Uh, as soon as we get enough, we're gonna order the flags, and we just have to figure out where we're gonna get it dropped, and then we'll have to assemble them. Uh, because the goal is, is to have by Fourth of July, the street lined with flags for the parade. Yeah, just for all of us, and we'll probably have a total of $100 flag.
How much time does it take to assemble?
Um, probably just, depends on how many people show up, probably one day.
Is that a project that, like, a community organization would want to do, or...
Yeah, we could have Boy Scouts, we could have council members.
Yeah.
I could buy the pizza.
Nice.
Okay, so I'll let you know. Or citizens, anybody wants to help out, anybody can help.
I just think there'd be a lot of groups that would be willing and are, people are always looking for projects.
Give me a list of some names, and then Patrick and I will figure it out.
What is it required? I mean, if I've got the little, the pitch to do it, what is it required?
All it is, is that there's a bag with the flag, and then a box with the, uh, two pieces, and then there's a plastic collar, and then a hook. So basically, you take the flag out, you hook it properly on one island, and then you slide the plastic collar up and clasp it around and tighten it up, and then it's ready to go. And, and the hole is screwed together. It's, uh, like a ball bearing, uh, colored, uh, coated aluminum, white aluminum. So it doesn't, it takes a, you know, hot minute, but with a lot of hands.
Oh, yeah.
Once they're put together, that's it, right? One and done?
That's it, that's it. And then, uh, Patrick had an idea that we could build something so that we could stand them up nice, keep them clean and off the ground, and respect it. So we can talk about that later, but I'm excited about it. Thank you, Rob.
Nice job.
How many flags, Tom?
I have...
Uh, there's, uh, two hundred and fifty, or, we probably are gonna have to buy at least two fifty. We have fifty now.
So like twenty-five people, but tend to get under your desk, so it's not...
Hey, that would be fun. I'll buy the pizza and the pop.
I'm going.
All right. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, Don. Final call of council for new business? All right, just a couple of notes. Tim, if you could take note, if we could, for the February 25th, uh, meeting, uh, resolution to plan to eliminate outdoor dining restrictions?
Yeah, if you do, is this a roll call vote?
Roll call vote?
Yeah.
All in favor to add that up to, uh, February 25th meeting?
It's, it's actually, uh, March.
No, this is, this is the resolution. No, no, we don't need a roll call. This is the resolution that Daryl passed.
Oh, big burn, yeah.
That's just a piece of...
Yeah, a piece of regular, but it's, yeah.
I think what you're after is you'd like a motion for a council of the whole meeting to follow the February 25th, February council meeting. You would like to set March 25th as a public hearing for the Mason Business District.
That's correct.
And you would like to set April 1st as a tentative date to meet at Walsh College as a council of the whole.
Three for three?
Is that a motion? It is.
I'm Daryl. I will second.
All right. I need a roll call for that. Tim, would you please call a roll that?
Yes.
Member Fols?
Yes.
Member Peters?
Yes.
Member Waring?
Yes.
Member Fonte?
Yes.
Member Soretta?
Yes.
Member Rubble?
Yes.
Member Keesling?
Yes.
Seven zero. All right. Yes, we're all set. And, and just a quick note on the, on the Walsh meeting. I talked to Mark about this a couple of days ago. Um, the, uh, the group that we got our exchange student through, CIEE, she wants to have all of the exchange students in Stark County come to a meeting. And I thought this would be the perfect opportunity.
I don't know why.
I'm sure there are many international students there. Um, I'm gonna work with Don to get, to find out. I know where my students from, where everybody else is from, and see if there's anyone that, uh, is enrolled at Walsh that is from the same area or country, or, you know, maybe the same neighborhood, it'd be kind of cool, so.
Heavy vicious people.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so we'll get them on, so that'll be a nice little, uh, thing for, yeah, meeting, which will be some sort of acknowledgement in that as well, so.
Great.
Okay. All right, that concludes this, uh, meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Subdued.
Second? Favor?
Aye.
Do our adjourn.
Hi, you're there, Adam. Would you shut this off?
Uh-huh.